Are we still doing the years of service tonight?
So, we would like you to announce them, but there is obviously nobody here in city council chambers to be recognized.
Well, that'll shorten it up a little bit.
And for everybody to know, the meeting is now being recorded.
How do you pronounce Esmeralda's last name? My watch says T minus fifteen and counting. Okay, I think it's the witching, witching time, so let me call the meeting recorder. At 5:30 PM, November 23, 2020, and Monday evening at city council chambers, there are some present, but others are at a go-to meeting, which is how I'm participating tonight. Let me give a notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comments during the public discussion of any of the agenda items. You have to step to the mic or call. State your name and address for the record and limit the time for remarks to three minutes or less, so others may be given the opportunity to speak. Speak clearly and direct comments to the mayor and council and not to any specific consular. If it's at the discretion of the mayor and council, respond to specific questions and comments, or have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's try the pledge of allegiance remotely. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Caused significant feedback while several of us were trying to coordinate. Let's call for the roll call.
Here.
Gowney.
Here.
Coop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Very good, full house, so to speak. It's now time for the mayor, council, and administrator comments. Does anyone on the council wish to make any comments?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Gary.
Yes, sir.
Let's not do this again. It'll be my only comment.
Okay, well.
Hopefully, this is a one-edged gun. But we'll see how it goes. Thank you, your honor.
Good. For whatever it's worth, the court system has canceled all hearings, trials, things like that, until February of one because of the spike in COVID diagnoses. And we're getting pretty bad reports in terms of this county, the state of Iowa, and our country compared to other countries. And so, just about everything I'm doing professionally and other meetings and other groups are going to the Zoom type of meetings. So, I think unless things really turn around, we're probably going to continue doing this. So, and so much for my comments as the mayor. City administrator, any comments from you?
No, your honor.
Okay, let's, let me go on then and recognize the following people for their years of service for the city. Brenda Welton for thirty years, Jim Crowbridge for twenty years, Dave Daters, Ted, ten years, Ted Smith, ten years, Curtis Rao, ten years, Josh Vornell, ten years, Rick Weitzel, ten years, Esmeralda Armus, five years, and Diana Steiner for five years. We get an awful lot of good work out of all these folks, and it's fun to see them hit anniversaries like that. I suppose for the two consulars and few people in the chambers, you could clap. And I think the supervisors will recognize those folks at another time with appropriate paperwork. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Okay.
Your honor, I'd like to remove some things from the consent agenda, please.
Oh, I, I was told that was going to happen, yep. Okay.
Item number seven, item number eight, and item number seventeen. Two more, your honor.
Okay.
Nineteen and twenty.
Very good. Is, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those things removed?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you. Ms. Cale is over.
Second, your honor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gowney.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Very good. That carried, then. Madam Clark, would you please read those items?
Approved minutes from the November ninth, 2020 median bill list in the amount of $1,966,949.73. Appoint Andrew Poole to the Park and Rec Advisory Committee. Appoint Anders Carlsson to the Library Board. Approved liquor license change of ownership at El Portal 1716 South Center Street to Alfonso Medina. Approved liquor license renewals for BPOE Lodge Number 312 at 101 West Church Street. Approved monthly financial statements for July 2020. Resolution to approve the facade grant application for Marla's Headliner on Main at 118 West Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution to approve the building, the code building upgrade grant application for Diane Holdings LLC at 210 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. Resolution authorizing internal debt reimbursement to tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal area number two. Resolution authorizing internal debt reimbursement to tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal area number three. Resolution authorizing internal debt reimbursement to tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal area number four. Resolution approving the fiscal year 20 annual urban renewal report for the city of Marshalltown. Resolution approving the fiscal year 20 annual city financial report for the city of Marshalltown. Resolution approving facade improvement agreement with the Marshalltown Central Business District. Resolution approving fiscal year 22 TIS certification for the city of Marshalltown.
Very good, and I'm hoping you were able to keep track of the ones removed, and you can tell us which one we're going to discuss first.
Yes, item number seven, resolution approving employment contract amendments for Jessica, city administrator Jessica Kinzer.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Discussion. If, if you could hear me, I was calling for discussion, so if there is none, let's take. Let's call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Thank you. And let's go on to the next item.
Item number eight, resolution approving salary adjustment for city administrator Jessica Kinzer.
Is there a motion to approve this one?
So moved, your honor. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
On to the next one.
Item number seventeen, resolution approving operations agreement with the Marshalltown Central Business District.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, your honor.
Second, your honor.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, your honor, this is Gary. Question for Jessica, first of all. What was the amount of the previous years?
I believe the amount of previous year was thirty thousand dollars.
Was that static from the year before that, too?
I think the year before might have been thirty, it's thirty-one thousand. There's been a very incremental increase. The 2018 was also a weird year because there was forty thousand dollars in operational, or incentive funds that were transitioned to operations as well in the 2018, 2019 years due to the tornado.
I'm just hesitant to continue to increase this. You know, I don't have a problem with the facade grant, which we approved earlier, but just to continue to increase the operational of the organization. I just don't think the taxpayer signed up for that, so thank you.
Any other discussion by the council? I suppose I ought to open the mic for public discussion as well. I mean, mute, mutus, unmute us for fifteen seconds.
Your honor, Nate McCormick here.
Go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, councilors. Nate McCormick. I am 1904 Bailey Drive in Marshalltown, and I'm the president of the Marshalltown Central Business District. You know, as we talked about last week, we do certainly appreciate the funding that the city puts forward to help support the MCBD. As many of you know, the, the operational funding that we get from the city provides a little over half of our administrative budget. And it's critically important to continuing to do the job that, that we do in Marshalltown of making sure we're supporting the downtown, we're getting the help and support to our downtown building and business owners, and helping them leverage all those programs that are available, both from the city and the facade and the incentive grants, the state in the case of our challenge grant programs from the Main Street Program for Iowa, and then also those larger programs from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So, you know, I certainly do, do respect the council's concern over the, the operational costs, and we do do everything we can to run as lean of an organization as we can. As many of you know, we only have one paid staff person. Our board is entirely volunteer. It's building and business owners, it's community, community volunteers generally do a huge amount of volunteer work. For those of you that maybe were around downtown, you saw the cleanup. You know, unfortunately, the holiday stroll, the holiday stroll itself was canceled, but if you look at the decorations downtown and the lights and the, the resub, you know, that's all volunteer effort as well. Takes a tremendous amount of, of staff time to coordinate all of that volunteer effort. And, and again, you're, the support of the city is critically important to getting that done. So, but we put that out there, we will continue to support the city in our, as we work together towards the downtown master plan, so wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public? Okay, yeah, I've driven down Main Street the last two nights just to enjoy. It really does look nice this year. I like the light bulbs and I like the window dressings and what the store owners have been able to do. Hearing no other public comment, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Gowney.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Warren.
Yes.
On to the next one.
Item number nineteen, resolution to approve the federal recreation trail application for the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail.
I'd entertain a motion for that.
So moved, your honor.
Second, your honor.
Council discussion?
I have a question, and I'm not sure who, too, I guess, maybe Jeff or Jessica, maybe. In that resolution, there's a grant for three hundred thousand dollars working some concrete work. And the end of that paragraph that says, "The city of Marshalltown will provide the required match for this project," I guess I'm asking what that match is and where would it come from?
I know Justin Nickel filled out that application, and I'm not quite sure what that amount is.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. I believe that's an eighty-twenty match, so I'm trying to do the math on three hundred thousand. Rounded to the effect of a hundred thousand. And the intent would be that Trails Inc. is actually raising the money to put up the match share. The language was a requirement of the DOT to put into that because the DOT and Trails Inc. cannot enter into an agreement between the two. It has to be a government to government.
That would be donated money from somewhere that would go to that fund?
That would be the intent, yes.
What's the timeline on this?
The project as it stands would be ready for construction in the second half of 2021.
Twenty twenty-one. Okay.
Fifteenth is the bid date right now.
Just against city money being involved until the county steps forward and does their share of that trail, that I would not support any city money.
I would agree. Any other comments?
Your honor, Gary, Justin, do we know we have this money from private donors? Or if we approve this tonight and that money doesn't show up, we're on the hook for it all of a sudden, right?
Theoretically, yes, that could be the case, but once again, Trails Inc. can't enter into an agreement with the DOT as the city is the owner and administrative agent on the Iowa River, Rivers Edge Trail.
So, so basically, we're acting as the agent, but the downside is we're the agent that's responsible. The Trail Inc. doesn't come up with the money for us. Is that correct?
One point to clarify on that would be that ultimately, there would be some sort of grant agreement. Just by applying for a grant, there's usually some acceptance that has to happen. And so, the council could apply for the grant on behalf of Trail Inc., you get awarded the grant, but we don't have to accept the grant if there is no funding from Trail Inc. for that match. So I think that was the thing to consider, is this is applying for a grant, it's not actually accepting a grant, it's just putting us into the running for it. There's still another step that you would have to take if we were awarded.
I'm no longer on that board and haven't been for about a year and a half, I think, but the last I knew, Trails Inc. had been able to raise about four million dollars to get to the point where they have. I, I wouldn't fear them coming through again.
Your honor, I understand. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask for other comments, so go ahead, Gary.
I, I agree with Al. I'm okay with that. I'd just like to see, you know, we've done our part in town, you know, and this will benefit Marshalltown, but it's also going to benefit areas in the county. I, you know, I just, I guess I'd like to see the supervisors put some skin in the game on this also. And, you know, let Trail Inc., you know, give them a break and give us a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comment?
This is Bill. I guess I would like to see Trails Inc. to make a formal application and appearance before the council, the county board of supervisors. Skin in the game is called, is what it's called. And the whole of the county does benefit from this. Supposedly, there's an economic benefit. I guess I believe that. It's still in development, but the county, I feel, should have a part in that. Thank you.
Just so you know, while I was on the board, that did happen twice, and there hasn't been a change since I was on the county board of supervisors. But that's not a bad suggestion, maybe Trails Inc. will think third time's the charm.
I would hope so. Thank you.
Other council comment?
One more question, if you, if you would, please.
Yes.
When would this come back to us, Jessica? You know the timetable on this one?
I'll let Jeff or Justin answer that.
Gary, this is Justin. I do not know that timeframe at the moment. I can certainly find out for you, but oh, my presumption is sometime in the first quarter of 2021.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I think. I think it's more like six months out, so. I think, Justin, thank you, your honor.
Six months out, it's about when we intend to start construction, so I'm going to guess it's going to be before that.
If no one else from the council speaks, I suppose we should unmute again for fifteen seconds.
Lines are unmuted.
Open for public comment. Okay, let's call the roll.
Warren.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Very good. On to the next one.
Item twenty, resolution approving contract change orders fifty-five, fifty-seven, fifty-eight for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum renovation project.
Entertain a motion.
Second, your honor.
Good. Discussion?
Again, I pull this off, just to ask Jeff real quick. You could give a two-minute clarification to the public about the sidewalk and the parking lot changes because those are, those are unnecessary errors. I'm not sure who's paying for it yet, and I'm not sure what's going on. I just, we have to be more careful than that somehow.
Yeah, sure. Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. When Garland poured the concrete out of the north side front entrance of the building, city staff went and looked at it and checked, and it did not meet ADA standards. It was at too much of a slope. In reviewing that, all, in reviewing that concrete, we also then looked at the first street sidewalk and found out it did not meet ADA standards. And the parking lot itself actually didn't meet ADA standard for where the handicap parking stall was going to be. So to make all the Coliseum area accessible, a few more panels in the parking lot needed to get added, or needed to get taken out and replaced to meet ADA code. And the first street sidewalk needs, needs to get taken out and replaced, and those were not in the original bid specifications. The, the concrete that was put on the north side of the building is being replaced, but at Garland's expense. So, this change order only addresses the new concrete areas in the parking lot and sidewalk that, that weren't addressed in the original scope.
Correct. Thanks, Jeff. I'd like to say a positive word about the last one, where shuffleboard game lines.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Any discussion? Let's open up the mics again. Okay, hearing no discussion from the public, let's call the roll on this one.
Gowney.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Gowney.
Yes.
Very good, that one carried as well, and now that it did, I'll have to say, this may be the open invitation to those that use the senior center and miss that shuffleboard to get them back. On to item G resolutions. Would you read the first one, please?
Resolution approving an agreement for professional services with Stanley Consultants for the Center Street Bridge Project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Before you, as a resolution for a study phase of engineering services with Stanley Consultants to do a thorough evaluation of all the components of the Center Street viaduct. So with what I would call a menu of repairs, so that we can have a discussion about what repairs to the viaduct are required, what repairs are desired, and what our budget will be for that project when we get to it. I know in the past, we've had conversations about the closure of the smaller bridge to the south and the desire not to have longer stretches of, of that viaduct or Center Street closed. So that's what I'm concerned about in studying this and coming back to the council is if we only make the required repairs, I could probably promise you that we'll be back in five, six, seven, eight years after we make those repairs to do it all again. So, we'll, we'll do the study and the behind-the-scenes work to look at all the repair needs and the costs, and then we'll come back and have a frank conversation with the council about what's required, what we can afford, and what we desire to afford.
Any questions or discussion?
Your mayor?
Yes, sir.
Justin, I guess the only ask that I have is that when that gets brought back, it would be beneficial to understand what the encumbered costs of repairs have been over the last number of years, since I know this isn't the first time we've considered repair for the Center Street Bridge, just to know what money we've already sunk into it thus far versus what we're looking at today.
Do you have a timeframe, Gabe, that you, the last major repairs were made to the bridge in two thousand? Do you have a timeframe, Gabe? The last major repairs were made to the bridge in 2006.
Well, it'd be interesting what those were in comparison to what we would be doing. I just, I'd like to understand, repairing it for another five or six years, it's gonna be an encumbered cost that we'll be doing every X amount of years versus doing one big lump sum. I mean, a little perspective in order to warrant our decision on moving forward with something more than just a repair.
Understood.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes. You may.
Justin, will we have this answer back before we start talking budget in that margin?
No, we will not, but I can tell you that the repair project is unlikely to happen until at least 2022, if not 2023. There will be a really long lead time in coordinating with the Union Pacific Railroad. They have a lot of requirements as to insurance and the requirement to have a flagger, and when we're working over the railroad tracks, how that impacts their operations. So the project isn't likely to happen for at least two, if not three, years.
Let's go ahead and unmute again. Sounds like something as a pet woodpecker. Okay, let's go back to mute. Call the roll.
Year in.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Very good. Unable, read the next resolution for us, please.
Resolution approving an agreement for professional services with Fox Engineering for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation CIPP project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, for the amount of $151,700.
Is there motion to approve this resolution? Don't move, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director, again, before you is a resolution to approve an agreement with Fox Engineering for the next phase of sanitary sewer repairs required by the consent order that the Iowa DNR and the city of Marshalltown entered into, and I believe 2009 or 2010. The engineering work that Fox will be doing is for the next CIPP, which stands for cured in place pipe, which means they blow a polyethylene sock down through the sanitary sewer lines and then steam cure them so that they are now intact on the inside of the pipe and make sure that the waste traveling through our sanitary sewer pipes makes it all the way to the water pollution control plant. Are there any questions I can answer?
I don't expect any public comment on this one. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Unable, please read the next item.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 305 South Second Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Dan Ogle.
And I will declare the public hearing is open at 6:03 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Let's open the mic for 15 seconds for public comments. Next is the call for staff review.
And, Your Honor, could you recheck your time?
I've got 6:03 PM on my watch.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So this is one of the D and D, dangerous and dilapidated building lots, but there are six of them here that we will be selling tonight. I really don't have any comments on any specific ones. There was a request for the deal bid process that went out and was also advertised in the newspaper and online. And so we received bids on each property, so we're happy to sell them and look to close on each of these by the end of the year. But I'd be happy on the next fix to answer any questions from the council.
Does our city council require, the city council, or require that we do these independently, or could we lump all six together?
See, in talking with the city attorney prior to this, we do need to do each individual public hearing on the disposal of property.
Okay. Next item is to call for council comments. Hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing is closed at 6:05 PM. Let's, would you please read the next item?
I move that we move forward with the resolution to sell the property, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you, yeah. Got off my procedure. Roll call.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Very good. Now let's go on to the next item.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 405 East Anson Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Dan Ogle.
And I'll declare that public hearing is open at 6:07 PM. I assume the clerk received no written comments?
No, I did not, Your Honor.
Time for public comments. Let's open the mics for 10 seconds.
The mics are open.
And staff review, the staff's already reviewed this one. So it's time for council comments or questions of the staff. Hearing none, I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:07 PM and would call for a motion.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. Unable, please read the next one.
Public hearing and resolution providing the conveyance and transfer of title for 710 East State Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Dan Ogle.
The public hearing is declared to be open at 6:08 PM. I assume the clerk received no written comments?
Sounds correct.
And time for public comments, 10 seconds. We've already had the staff reviews, so are there any council comments? Hearing none, I declare that public hearing is closed at 6:08 PM and call for a motion to approve that.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes. Yes.
County.
Yes.
Carried on to the next one.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 902 East Anson Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Dan Ogle.
And I'll declare this one open at 6:09 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Unmute for public comments for 10.
Lines are muted.
We've had the staff review. Any council comments? Hearing none. Let's close that one at 6:09 PM. That doesn't happen very often. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yep.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Okay, next item, please.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 1104 East Main Street from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Alfredo B. Gorgonio and Juanam Messias de Gorgonio.
I'll declare this public hearing is now open at 6:11 PM. The clerk received no written comments. Correct me if I'm wrong. Time for public comments for 10.
The lines are muted.
Thanks. We can skip the staff review, and I'm assuming there aren't any council comments on this one either, so I'll declare the public hearing closed at 6:12 PM. Is there a motion to approve this one? So moved, Your Honor.
So moved, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Can we clarify who is the second on that?
I'll second.
Martin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well, and next item, please.
Public hearing and resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 402 North Third Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Patricia A. Charlier and Stephen D. Naderhoff.
The public hearing is open at 6:13. The clerk received no written comments. Let's open the mics for 10 seconds for public comments.
The mics are open.
We've had the staff review, and I don't anticipate council comments on this one either, so.
Your Honor, I do have a question, if I may.
You may. Sorry.
What was the second bid on this one?
I was gonna say, we don't have the big tabulation during council chambers. I'm not sure what that is at this point.
Okay, so my question was, can we legally lower this amount to a dollar more than the second bid? I don't think. Legally, we have to take whatever they bid, right, Roger? Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Unless we don't want to sell it. No, we want to sell it.
Any other comments, then? Okay. It's 6:14. Time to close the hearing and call for a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Roll call.
County.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Hail.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. I was excited to see this couple acquire that lot because they sure take good care of their house right next to it. Let's go on to the next item.
Public hearing and resolution adopting tentative resolution providing for the conveyance and transfer of title by the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, to Rosemont Companies LLC to the property described herein and authorize execution and delivery of warranty deed.
I declare the public hearing open at 6:15 PM. I assume the clerk received no written comments unless she hollers at me. Time for public comments. Okay, the staff, all their staff review on this one.
Yeah, so the reason, the description in the title says for the property described herein is because it's describing, I think, lots 1 through 15 and tracks A and B of the Southridge Estates subdivision, which you had recently approved. And this is carrying out sort of one of our final steps for transferring the property, selling the property and transferring it to Rosemont Companies LLC. I will give you the heads up that they have established a new LLC and have requested that we assign things to this new LLC at our next council meeting. So there is still one more step to go, but this is sort of the formal procedure. They have requested closing in mid-June period.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearings closed at 6:17 and invite a motion to approve.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by County, thank you. Roll call.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
County.
Yes.
Very good. Onto the 10th and last.
Public hearing and resolution to approve amendment number eight to the urban renewal plan for Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three.
I'll declare that public hearing open at 6:17 PM and assume the clerk received no written comments, so let's open the microphone to public comments.
The lines are unmuted for public comments.
Time for council, or for staff review, sorry.
Yes, as a reminder, we are amending our urban renewal plan for Area Number Three, which is kind of the south side commercial, to include a project for McCarlin Clinic and then to also correct some boundary issues which had been present. And so if this amendment is approved tonight, then at the next city council meeting is when a resolution setting, or setting a public hearing for a development agreement with McCarlin Clinic would be coming forward for your consideration with a planned public hearing at our last meeting in December, on December 28th. And so this also explains the ordinance, which is up next as well, which we will probably be asking you to waive the third reading one as the December. at the December 14th city council meeting as well.
Thank you. Any council comments? Close the public hearing at 6:14 PM and call for a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
And second by?
Second.
Goudy, thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Fulton. Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Very good. That carried. And so on to item H ordinances, we just have the one. Would you read that one, please?
An ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in amendment number eight to the urban renewal plan for Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Three pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. First reading.
Is there a motion to approve it? Maybe even with a motion to waive the other readings?
I thought the city administrator asked if we would waive the third reading at our meeting in December. And this came up again.
There's, there's no, no reason to waive the additional readings at this council meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion by Goudy, second by Martin. Any further discussion? I suppose we should unmute the lines for 10 seconds again.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
You can. Let's vote.
Fulton.
No.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. On to item I, discussion items, and the first one is a discussion of the extension of urban revitalization areas and expansion of area number two.
Yes, so I had had some, some property development areas for area number two brought to my attention, and so I started digging into the ordinances for these urban revitalization areas. And I'll, I'll just say, urban revitalization equals tax abatement. And that's kind of the, the way to think about that compared to urban renewal equals tip. So we're talking about two areas which are set up for commercial tax abatement schedules of three years, 100%. And most of these areas actually expire on December 31st, 2020. So there is the initial request to renew each of the areas as they are actively used and still are in areas that promote commercial development. Area number two is one that has some properties that I believe that we should consider adding, and I've identified those in the wisdom memo there, which I will bring up just so that it's showing here. And so there are a few that are on the, the boundaries that are 201 East Anson Street, which is a vacant lot, which is recently sold. And I think we will see it redeveloped. And so I've got that and 306 West High Street, which is a vacant piece of property that is sitting kind of near the new police and fire building. And if it's not currently listed, it has definitely been listed multiple times in recent years. And then the other area that I'm recommending that you add would be the area that would be served by the new Edgewood Extension. And this would be kind of a move that would be proactive, but would be one that would sort of establish some, some incentives for commercial entities only. I should mention that if you are an industrial property or a good industrial development, that there is a separate schedule adopted, the city has adopted by ordinance that's actually stated in state code that is a five-year sliding scale. And so this is just for commercial or only. And ultimately, urban revitalization area number three, which is our housing area, I'm not recommending any actions at this time, but ultimately, we will be monitoring this as we move forward and partnering with the chambers to see if it's still necessary to rehab an urban revitalization area for housing. It certainly still could be just because improvement's over, I think, 10% of the current assessed value. You can't apply for tax abatement on that. So that would be potentially a tool that would still be able to be used for housing rehabilitation moving forward as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but just say that if we want urban revitalization slash tax abatement in 2020, there are two areas that we will need to move forward with taking action on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Let's see if the public has any.
The lines are unmuted.
Very good. Do you need any direction to the staff?
Yeah, if I can have a motion to move forward with the recommendations in the memo, that would be the easiest way to go about that.
So moved, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Isom.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Weren, thank you. We've already asked for the public to comment. I haven't. Let's take a vote.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Fulton.
No.
Weren.
Yes.
Okay, you've got your direction. Very good. And the last item we have under the discussion items is to talk about the first ward vacancy.
Yes, so as, as you are all aware, Councilmember Cahill will not be a council member much longer, though I think once you're in the club, you're kind of always part of the club, I guess. And so she has submitted her letter of resignation effective on December 31st, which means that a vacancy exists as of January 1st. And so I wanted to get the conversation started now so that hopefully we can have, use the month of December to, to get somebody on board and move forward. I am recommending that we pursue an appointment to fill the vacancy for a few reasons. One being that this term, this, this term remaining is just through the end of 2021 and that we do see the special elections. They do have a cost to them as well, and so the, I mentioned the cost from the second ward seat in 2018 at $6,341.98, who was given a rate of $6,000 to $8,000 today by the county auditor's office. And so if there, I, I do want to, you know, clarify around my third paragraph, which is that once you, if you decide to make an appointment, there can be a petition filed within 14 days. And then after making an appointment, there's also, there's a 14-day period for a petition to force a special election to be presented. And so, so that's kind of the way things exist right now. But my, my recommendation to ensure that there is somebody in the seat as of January 1st would be move forward with a special appointment pending any sort of petition for a special election.
Council comment or questions?
Yeah, Your Honor, this is Gabe. I had one question. So what would be the difference from a timeline perspective if we were going to appoint somebody versus special election? When would somebody be in the seat, one versus the other?
So I can't speak to the specifics of, of a special election and how long that takes, but I believe there's like a 60-day period in which the election has to be held. But that has to be coordinated with the county auditor's office to schedule and to hold. And then typically, it takes about a week. I'm not, I'm not sure if it'd take a week in this situation for the canvas of the, of the results to be completed. And so I would think we'd potentially be in that February or later timeframe before a special election could be held.
From, from an appointment perspective, though, that would be immediate, depending that we were to appoint somebody?
Correct. Like, the timeline that I kind of had in my mind, if it was, it was something you wanted to move forward with, was that we would advertise for applicants and then use the December 14th meeting date to basically, you know, do some sort of interview that day or to basically have a motion on that agenda for, for you to go ahead and make a selection after interview. So I see the 14th as being a critical meeting, and then the meeting on the 28th would be where you would have a resolution to be able to complete that appointment process.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess I could have answered my own question on the special election, since I think it was the second week of March when I took seat, when special election happened during my time period.
Other questions or comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I see two courses of action for us here. One, it's been brought to my attention, there will be a petition. So we are going to have a special election, and it's only going to take 30 signatures, is my understanding. So that's only going to take a day to get those signatures. So if we appoint or not, we're still gonna, we're still gonna spend the money and have a special election. So that's one course of action, is we appoint and wait out the time period, schedule a special election. Or the other course of action would be if Ms. Cahill would change her resignation date to the end of this month. That would buy us a month and, and get us started on the process faster to have that special election. But I guarantee you, there's going to be a special election. So, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So Jessica, if there, if we appoint somebody and then there is a special election, will that seat be filled temporarily until a special election results?
So it seems like if there is a petition that is prevented prior to an appointment, no. There, there was, the process would stop, you would not be able to make an appointment. But if you make an appointment and then a petition is filed, yes, if that appointee would be able to continue on until they're no longer the valid seat holder as determined by the electors of the first ward.
Okay, so my perspective only, but I would personally think that proceeding with an appointment would be the best path forward. I don't like to proceed with what ifs, and even if there is a high likelihood that that happens, I like to be proactive and have something in case there is no petition signed. So I guess my would be in favor of the petition, the interviews, and otherwise appointment.
I agree with Gabe strongly.
Other feedback?
Yeah, I guess, this is Mike. I guess I would agree with that. We've done that previously. And that person probably, if nothing else, gets a leg up, maybe so to speak. But there are sometimes critical things that come up that we could probably use the seventh person on there, and whether it gets to a special election or whether it doesn't, I guess that's kind of immaterial. We still have a, a leg up on the process.
This is. This is Sue. I would certainly, I appreciate the thought that you're putting into this. Again, it's a hard decision to know what's the best thing to do from my end. I just want to make sure that the first ward is represented and that we don't have a gap in time from appointing someone to a special election. So I would also encourage the appointment. And if an election follows, then that would be the, the, then let the voters choose. But again, I just feel we should have someone in that spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council list to weigh in on this one?
If I may, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Clarify that again, Jessica. A petition comes in before we appoint, it stops the appointment?
Correct.
Please, yes, we're right then. We, we move forward with the appointment. That's the way to go. But I know, I can tell you guys right now that you're not going to get that far. You'll have a petition in your hands here probably next week. But you're right, that's the process, that's the process we need to go, though.
Mr. Isom?
No, Gary, I, I fully agree. I, one way or the other, if we get to that point, we'll get to that point. But I would presume that those that we would be discussing appointment with would be those that would be interested in the special election itself, so, at least for the most part. So I, I don't, I would presume that the names, the names that we'd be looking at for those interested would be vastly different than what the special election would partake from a candidate choice. So I, I agree.
Yeah, me too.
Anyone else on the council, otherwise I'll unmute the mics, unmute the phones, I guess.
The lines are muted.
Okay, would you like a motion to proceed under the understanding we will try to do an appointment first?
Correct.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Fulton.
No.
Weren.
Yes.
Very good. Staff has its direction, and that means it's now time for public comments. So I have to read this proviso that members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach or speak into a microphone and state his or her name and address. Limit comments to three minutes unless the longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no one else may be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings law. Let's unmute the lines and see if anybody wishes to comment.
The lines are muted, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll declare this council meeting is adjourned at 6:37 PM. Thanks for participating.